Nice to be inside. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting in town at Qualicum Beach. I'd like to start by saying we're having this meeting on the traditional territory of the Coast Hennas people, in particular the Qualicum First Nation. And we have an agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Then the agenda is adopted by consent. Strategic planning, planning session number day one. Ms. Vella.
First slide brought up, please. Thank you. And if we could go to slide view, thank you. A big thank you to the gallery for attending today and to staff for the lion's share of the work that it took to get this ready to go, in addition to everything else we've been focusing on. So a big, a big thank you to staff. I thought we'd start today just by reviewing the strategic planning and budget calendar and the upcoming dates for the benefit of the public. So today is the first strategic planning session, and then we'll see the second one on November 12th. So anything that gets carried over from today, capital projects, and then we have a service level discussion as well for parks that'll happen on November 12th. On December 10th, we'll be looking for council to endorse the strategic planning recommendations. January 14th, we're moving into public engagement for budget. So session one is a committee of the whole on January 14th. The second committee of the whole, public engagement session, January 28th. And then we'll move through readings of the financial bylaw on February 25th, March 25th, and adoption on April 1st. So just everyone has a bit of an overview of what's coming up. So how did we advertise today? Town tidings, the website, posters, constant contact. We did an insert in the utility noteworthy and social media. So again, we're trying to reach out to engage the public as much as we can. The purpose of this meeting really is to update the strategic plan for 2026 to 2030. And this is probably becoming a bit of a familiar exercise for both council and the gallery, because this is the third year you've done this, third or fourth year Raj, that we've done this in open meeting, third. And it's really about integrating all of the town's work on planning, budgeting, long-term financial planning, and council's strategic initiatives. It's also about transferring knowledge and information to the public about the town. And today, we're going to have a lot of focus on celebrating the successes of the last three years. So I'm excited to see how this lands. Three years. I'm sure there's been a lot done in 30, but we're going to focus on the last three. And we're also going to talk about the strategic initiatives that are proposed for today in light of all of the competing priorities and most significantly Eagle Crest Golf Course and due diligence for the Qualicum Commons. So we know this is an evolving process for strategic planning over the last three years, and we've made huge progress, but we're not done yet. I think every year we get a little better, a little more efficient. We continue to refine things. So it is the fourth year in strategic planning in open meeting, and we continue to look for ways to expand public engagement. You know, eventually we might see a survey for budget or other things like that. So continue to look for those opportunities and welcome input from the public on it as well. So I think this is one of our biggest areas for work that is still to come is making the connections. So this really should be about the connecting the official community plan, council's strategic plan, but the work lies in those multiple, excuse me, master plans that we have. And I want to see those more strongly connected to strategic planning and budget going forward. So work in progress. It's being made every year, but with some dedicated resource, we could really get some traction on this. Where I think our linkages are really strong is with the connecting the OCP to council's strategic plan to the annual budget. And then now we're doing those robust quarterly reportings that both council and some members who were in attendance on Wednesday would have seen with the capital project update that was given. So I think that's been a really big step forward. Part of today's is we're going to ask council to approve your strategic plan, and that's the document and handout that's available for the public. I'm not sure if we could actually just have somebody hand those out really quickly. Thanks, Danny. The slides are not legible, so I just wanted to make sure those who wanted a copy had a copy. So we recognize strategic planning as a core responsibility of council. Really, it's fundamental to your governance, and it's strongly linked to your budget. Council's job is to set the strategic direction, allocate resources, you receive reporting and provide oversight, and you manage risk. So in 2023, council chose six focus areas, and you are to be commended for staying the course with these focus areas. So you chose good governance, community health and wellbeing, climate action, housing, economic prosperity, and progressive infrastructure. So these are the slides that are not intended to be legible. You do have a handout. And so we're just wanting council to go through this document and say, yes, this again is our standing strategic plan, that short four-page document for the year. So we talk about your governance role. There's a message from the mayor. This is a piece that's important, really important for you, because this is your vision statement. So when we talk about those connections with the official community plan, your vision statement comes right out of that official community plan. Your mission statement, which you're no stranger to, comes right out of the community charter about the duties of what a council does. And importantly, we actually add in for your strategic plan, the guiding principle from council's code of conduct. So that's a really important page for council to read and endorse. We acknowledge the work, the connections that is still coming, and we ask you to reaffirm your six focus areas that I just mentioned. So with that, your worship, staff has a recommendation that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the draft strategic plan for 2026 to 2030 dated October 24th, 2025 be adopted. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Ms. Vella. Any questions or could someone make that motion? Council Young moving second to Council Vandevogge discussion. All in favor? Opposed if any, carry. Thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Vella.
Thank you. I always like to establish a common knowledge base for people. So as new people join us in this process, we want to bring them along. So it may feel like a bit of repeat for council, but bear with us. So I want people to understand that council advances their six focus areas by strategic initiatives attached to those. So that's a really important piece. Strategic planning in both 24 and 25 saw staff time largely allocated for 25 and 26. So the overflowing bucket, well, I know my mayor isn't fond of buckets. The overflowing bucket really does represent the staff capacity, and that was before we added a couple big things to our plate. So the challenge for council is that you have diverse citizen needs, expectations, and priorities. Your staff are limited in number, and so are the working hours that go along with those staff. We also can only engage our public so much. Even the public can be burned out on engagement on multiple tasks. We had the unanticipated focus on Eagle Crest Golf Course and due diligence on the Qualicum Beach Commons in that bucket that is already overflowing. And council has to also manage your constrained revenues that are available. So it's you who get to determine this juggling act, and we know there is no shortage of great ideas. I think I say that every year as well. So approaches to funding these initiatives. Council can fund these in a number of ways. So we have taxation, which is one, the source for your strategic initiatives reserve, which is a standalone reserve. We have taxation and grants. We have funding from senior levels of government. We have borrowing. You could dispose of town-owned property or a combination of these. The key thing for both council and the public to remember is that initiatives can't be advanced without council direction and resourcing. November 1st, 2023, that Bill 44 announcement. So it was, and it continues to be, a huge game changer for the organization. So provincial housing legislation introduces sweeping changes to local government planning framework. And I think when our consultant was here last year, and she's been in the business for 30 years, she said she's never seen anything like this. And I think that is the sentiment amongst all of us. So a big game changer, which we also had to deal with. And again, staff is to be commended on the advancements that they have made in light of that new imposition. So we did see the small-scale multi-unit zoning. The deadline for that was June 30th, so that's completed. We have the interim housing needs report that had to be completed last December 31st, so that was done. Council knows that we're in the progress of updating the OCP and zoning bylaws, and those are to be completed by December 31st, 2025. I do feel that if we are in significant progress, we have the timeline set up to meet that deadline, but if council chooses to give us more direction or have conversation, and we land at third reading by December 31st, we've reached out to the province to see if there would be an issue without response. So I'm not anticipating that would be the worst thing that happened, but we are still targeting and have made room for that December 31st deadline. And then we also know we have the Ways to Achieve Attainable Market Housing, the WAM project, as it's fondly known. That's been initiated, and we'll be looking for completion of that in Q2 26. So again, these all result from that mandated focus on housing. What's really interesting, and I think important for the public to know, is that as we talk about all of these special projects, that's about 15% of the work that staff does. We really, you know, I've seen 90-10, 85-15. The point is that a lot of the work that we do is that 85 or 90%, the special projects are the 15. So this is a new slide this year, because I thought, I just wanted to demonstrate the huge amount of work that goes on. So we have 60 town-owned facilities, 40 of those with leases. We manage numerous community events or collaborate with them. We have multiple, many kilometers of roads, trails, sidewalks, storm mains, 280 hectares of green space, which is one of the things that makes this community so special to live in. We have to manage permits and applications. We have an airport to operate. We've put a lot of work into public communication and engagement. We provide great drinking water. I talk about the best of the best later. We provide fire protection and emergency response. We ensure regulatory compliance. You have a sewer service. There's a lot that goes on. So this is the 85 or 90% of our work. I think as we talk later about shifting priorities, I really wanted this strategic planning session to focus on how much progress has been made in the last three years. And we did just receive the third quarter report on Wednesday, but for the benefit of the public who wasn't here, I'm also going to focus on those 2025 successes. So I'm going to walk you through 23, 24, and 25. As I mentioned, you did receive the third quarter update, and if council has any questions on this either today or on November 12th, Director Hare and the staff are here to answer those questions. But if there are no questions, your worship, I'll proceed. Thank you. So the outcome of governance decisions to date, and these, these successes are much more than strategic initiatives. These are going to be presented, there's strategic initiatives, there's operating successes, there's capital project successes, and really, those are all the result of council's governance. You make those hard decisions when you decide to resource staff, when you provide budget. It's those ways, those ways in which these things are advanced. So I really wanted to take some time and celebrate these, because I don't think we necessarily always do in one place. So in 2023, we saw East Village Phase 2 completion. And if council has any questions or wants to make a comment, please just signal me, otherwise I'll move through these quite quickly, your worship. The waterfront walkway and viewing platform construction commenced. A lot of these big projects are multi-year, but I think the, the start of this was a big milestone for the town. We put a lot of effort into respectful workplace and psychological safety in the workplace. And I think before we started to right-size our human resources department, we really saw this done off the side of the desk. And I think it really needs to be the forefront. It needs to be safe for staff's top performance. It needs to be safe for council's governance, and it needs to be safe for the public to participate in ways that often represent opposing views. And I think we've done a lot of great work on advancing that. So kudos to our HR department. The airport jet fuel system was installed. The LED lighting rehabilitation project was completed. The Satlum Park detailed park plan happened with engagement. The skate park feasibility study was undertaken. A lot of excitement around that project and a lot of community involvement. So this was really exciting to see get underway. As I mentioned, this was the first year of robust strategic planning in open meeting, and we saw the new budget book developed. Again, prior to 2023, strategic planning hadn't been done in open meetings, so the public didn't have the benefit of actually understanding really the operation of the organization, as well as the competing priorities that council has to deal with. We saw the Grandin Creek stair replacement. Lots of excitement about that one. The bus garage Phase 2 public engagement happened. We purchased a new fire department ladder truck to make sure our community was adequately protected. We saw some upgrades at Into the Woods Childcare Studio, another really exciting project for our community. There was a transportation safety plan on Highway 19A. There was a safety study that was completed back in 2023. Phase 1 of the waterfront expansion and ditch infill happened, which was a great improvement along our waterfront. We established an accessibility team. So again, as the province challenges us with new requirements, they put in an act that required us to establish an accessibility team, which is a really great thing. And so we had that in place by September 1st, 2023, in alignment with the legislation. I think one of the interesting pieces of this is the province actually didn't require this to be a committee of council with all of the rules and regulations that go along with this. So we actually established an accessibility team, and we look forward to continue working with that group. The tree protection bylaw was implemented. We had an airport consultation plan with public engagement, a few big meetings on that. The planning development review toolkit was developed, and I believe we received a presentation from Mark Holland and the director of planning on this one back in 2023. We implemented some significant GIS upgrades, which again allows us to be more efficient and modernizes our operations. We developed the public inquiry system. Hard to believe that we started on that in 2023. It has been a work in progress, but a huge success. So that started back in 2023. The development tracker went live on the town's website so that people can actually go in if they have questions about a development, go into the website, find which one they're interested in, and get the information themselves, which I think is a really neat tool, which again frees up staff time for different things. So that was 2023, your worship. And again, those are just a few of the key highlights, but I'll pause to see if council has any questions.
Any questions from council at this point? But this is a good reminder, three, it seems like a long time ago, but when you see all the projects that we've engaged the public in and how we advance them, I think it's a real success story. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So 2024. So we saw implementation of the Good Neighbor Program. We conducted a park service level review, and this was a really great project. I think I'll go into detail a bit on this one just for the benefit of the public. Often you'll, you'll see councils acquire more green space without ever actually thinking about, well, what are we doing to maintain that? So if your core group stays the same, but your parks and green spaces are increasing, without ever asking the governance decision-makers, you're actually diluting your park service. So what we did is we stopped and we said, okay, this is the service that we provide. This is how many staff we have, how many hours. And so as we start to acquire more green space or develop more parks, we actually now have a baseline to say, okay, well, what, what is the impact on staff? Because council could increase staff, so you could increase your service level, or you could actually reduce a service level in another area of the parks or green space. So you've, you've got some choices, but we've now set you up to make those choices with some data. You can now make data-driven decisions in this area. So I think that's really important. The Bay Street Slope stabilization construction commenced, a very big project that was long overdue, I would, I would say. So that was great. We also implemented committee of the whole meetings for increased public engagement. So we now have a public safety committee of the whole annually. We're not seeing much of a turnout for that, so we'll be asking council if that's something you want to continue. Most of the public safety discussion does now relate to the community transportation plan. So we'll be asking council if you want to approach that a little differently. Previously, the community transportation plan had been reviewed not annually. Sometimes it was every year, sometimes it was, there was a three-year. So we've now received council direction that we do that every year, and that's a committee of the whole that's really well-attended. The airport committee of the whole happens twice annually, and our next one is coming up on December 3rd, I believe it is. And the town hall style meetings, so council was doing open houses, and instead of that, we now have town hall style meetings four times annually that the public can come to and ask council any questions that they want. And the benefit about this is that all council hears the questions, and you also have staff in attendance to answer any questions where we can, or we can come back to council or the public with that information. So I think that was a really big step forward in, again, increased public engagement. Numerous successes with the community transportation plan, too many to mention. Again, back to the HR department, I think enhancing safety culture. Again, safety was something that was done off the side of someone's desk, and now it's a foundational piece of our organization. And there is a very human outcome to this, as well as a financial outcome, because as we can start to reduce our claims, those, it's a less of a cost to the town. It's also the most important thing we do to keep our people safe and happy. So this is now a key focus with some really great success. The asset management finance strategy. So to actually start to put some dollars and some pre-planning to how do we address the shortfall that we have in replacing our infrastructure? This is a challenge to, right across our country. This is the result of the, the World War, post-World War II building boom that happened. People weren't, governments weren't putting money away. We were putting pipes in the ground and other pieces of infrastructure with no plan to replace them. So we know now, over the last decade, it's really become apparent that we need to start aligning that replacement with how are we going to finance it? And so this was a really key piece in advancing this. This gets refined every year, again, as we do more scoping, understand more, replace more. It really is a living document every year, and so those numbers will be juggled by council, but it's really key for a government who is going to be able to handle this to know what they're facing. So I think Qualicum Beach has set themselves up for success. Speaking of a multi-year project, we saw the design of the Seacrest Road Stabilization Project completed. That was an amazing project. You'll get to see a picture later on the completed version. We saw the Memorial Golf Course Bridge completed. The Beach Creek Culvert replacement undertaken. That photo always shocks me, how, how small that huge equipment looks in that, in that ravine. So great picture. We saw the avgas tank replacement completed at the airport. Highway 19A ditch infill Phase 2, so 23 saw Phase 1. Again, Phase 2, 2024 in this multi-year project. The bus garage Phase 2 public engagement was undertaken. We saw the toy library installed. And while this isn't a big capital infrastructure, I have to say, it's been so well-received. It's so well-used. You know, children are in there, parents are gathering. It's just a really great addition to our waterfront. So again, kudos to the staff who built and installed that. The Memorial Roundabout Artwork was installed, and I have to pause and just say a huge thank you to Jesse Rakalma, the talented artist, Chief Rakalma, and the Qualicum First Nation for making this project a reality. If Qualicum Beach wasn't on the national, you know, radar before, you certainly were with this project. So very exciting. We saw the waterfront walkway and viewing platform opened with a really nice celebration. The Beach Creek Estuary Enhancement was completed, and I love this photo. It doesn't translate as well on the screen, but the, the whale tail in, in the background there, this is just an amazing project again for our waterfront. The Rupert Road Water Main Expansion was completed. Big project. We purchased a hydrovac truck. This was a replacement, but this, this is a key piece of our fleet to keeping us streamlined, able to respond quickly to emergencies. So really, really important piece of equipment with a very large price tag. So happy to see this replaced. Staff are really happy with how it's functioning, and again, it serves to, to protect our community well. Your worship, with that, I'll pause to see if you have any questions about any of those slides.
Any comments from council? I think we're doing really well, so let's just keep going.
It's an amazing pace.
Yeah.
Okay, so 2025, and again, some of these will be familiar based on Wednesday's planning. Excuse me, your worship. So the Quality of Life Survey was undertaken. This was a precursor to the OCP review. Qualicum First Nation collaboration, this is actually a standing item for council. You have a standing funding item that we'll discuss later. And council chose to support our First Nation neighbors with some waiting room chairs for their medical clinics. So again, a really great idea of how we can support each other. We certainly rely on our neighbors strongly for their insight when it comes to our development. Chief Rakalma is so generous with his gift of knowledge and insight. So again, as we, we can have a true relationship back and forth, it's wonderful. We saw the Community Wildfire Resiliency Plan undertaken. Fleet rightsizing and electrification policy, that's coming to council on November 12th. So that's going to be part of your capital plan discussion. Pathways to Sustainable Economic Development. So this is a project that was a result of the Reddit Fund, and I can't remember that acronym off the top of my head, but it was a significant project, and council's going to see that presented in Q2 2026, if not before. The Tree Canopy Update was completed. The town website redesign was completed. This was a huge amount of work for every department in this organization, having to upgrade the information contained. Again, it's a work in progress. We continue to make improvements with its searchability and things like that, but a huge step forward. There's that Seacrest Road Slope Stabilization Project that's completed. So that's an amazing, amazing engineering feat. The skate park construction was completed, and I have to say, you know, I hear about people coming from all over the island and the mainland. This is such a huge hit. And again, a really great example of municipal and public collaboration. Like the, the skate park group really got behind this, put some big dollars into it. There was a lot of in-kind effort from the public. So great effort and a great outcome for Qualicum Beach. The Judges Row Staircase was replaced. We saw the interim housing needs report completed. The official community plan, public engagement, and council will be seeing that draft November 5th, if I have that date correct. I'm getting the nod from my director, so that's great. The GHG, the greenhouse gas audit, was a The GHG, the Greenhouse Gas Audit, was initiated, and we're looking to present that ideally in Q1 2026. So that looked at Town Hall, the Civic Centre, and the Community Centre, if I'm correct. Director Sales? Thank you. The Water and Drainage Master Plans are underway. So this is a really important piece of managing our infrastructure as well. So, big, big step forward. The Ways to Achieve Attainable Market Housing, fondly known as the WAM, was initiated, and we'll be looking for presentation in Q1 or Q2 2026. I'll wobble a little bit on that Q1. Excuse me, the Eagle Crest Open House. So September 9th saw a huge turnout to open houses. We had the public hearing on October 6th, and then we saw the OCP and zoning bylaw amendments adopted on October 22nd. So it has been a really condensed process with a lot of public involvement. So thank you to the public who showed up so strongly to talk about this important initiative. Staff has been working with NAV Canada to consider expanding the noise-sensitive areas and implementing visual flight rules terminal procedures in the Canadian Flight Supplement. So council considered that at the last meeting and has deferred discussion of this until after the Committee at the Whole on December 3rd. So we have let NAV Canada know that we are on hold for a couple months now. So that was completed, but again, lots of work just to get us to that point. We undertook, good morning. We undertook the Beach Road Paving Project, which was really nice. It's always interesting that, this is a really visible project, and people really connect paving and tax dollars. So I'm really happy to see these things being advanced. Community Transportation Plan, you will have seen this slide last Wednesday, so we have a new crosswalk at 19A and Hall Road with the rapid-flashing beacons. We've submitted a grant, really exciting project, for $4.1 million to upgrade from Memorial Avenue to Bay Street along our waterfront and the Jubilee Park, the entrance of the Shady Rest. So grants, I can't stress enough to both council and the public how much work getting ready to submit a grant, submitting, even when you get it, then there's robust reporting. So grants are a lot of work. This is a really exciting project that I hope we get traction on. Accessibility Improvements, again, as we talked earlier about establishing that advisory team, we're physically seeing results in our community, and this one was on the corner of Primrose and Fern Road. It's Primrose Street and Fern Road. I talk like an out-of-towner there, my apologies. Sattlin Park Washrooms, so we've been collaborating with that and providing support for the lodge upgrades. The Society is just doing a ton of great work in that building, and again, I think this will really be, it's always been an icon for the community, and so having the park and those improved amenities, that's really exciting as well. The Qualicum Commons, so the one-year lease and due diligence that has been underway, it has been a lot of work, and we have a lot of work still to do going forward to see if council wishes to enter into a longer-term lease for this facility. The financial viability of this project is what council really has to consider, so we'll be continuing to discuss. The lower roof on the Civic Centre is being replaced. This was a really neat project about the lining of this culvert. So Oliver talked about, our Director of Capital Project, Manager of Capital Projects, Mr. Watson, talked about this project on Wednesday, but I think it's a really neat piece of technology. And if I could just look over, Mr. Watson, how big is that culvert?
That's a 600-millimeter diameter pipe. It's about 20 meters in length, maybe a little bit more.
So really significant pipes. When you're looking at being able to introduce these new technologies, staff is to be commended for their innovation, because this was going into estrada, so maintained access was really important as well. We've, we're working or have completed the Grand and Creek Confluence Engineering, so we know that culvert was collapsing, saw a culvert. The slide on the right is a temporary repair is being made to that culvert, but we will see that project completed in Q1 2026, ideally. We saw the Illaquah Road and Hemlock Street Water Main Replacement undertaken. Again, our crews are out there being busy. Progress to date for our vehicle replacement, this is also about making ourselves efficient. As things end of life, we're looking at what are the tools we need. So the Compact Multi-Tool Parks Machine is an exciting addition to our fleet. We saw two EV pickup trucks, so again, looking towards that new technology as it becomes available. Is it appropriate for the fleet? A resounding yes for the pickup trucks. And we got an electric road marking paint sprayer, again, speeding us up, making us more efficient. We purchased a new garbage truck. This is a picture of the old one. We haven't received it yet. It will be delivered, I'm not sure if it's before the end of the year or early 2026, Mr. Watson?
Yeah, somewhere around Christmas, it'll be arriving.
Okay. Staff's new Christmas present. And then the refurbished 2011 Public Works Backhoe. I think this is a really great example that Qualicum Beach doesn't need the shiniest and the best. Our staff do an amazing job at refurbishing and keeping this fleet working. So again, there's your 2011 Public Works Backhoe that, because of our talented staff, is still in operation. Public Works Fuel System Replacement. That one's actually going in in November, so it's being built, I believe, in Alberta. So it's been ordered and is being constructed. It'll be delivered and installed. The Tennis Court Resurfacing Happened. Replacement of Berwick 2 and 3, the well pumps, so again, protecting that fabulous water system we have. That's nearing completion. Undertook Ball Field Irrigation. Again, the picture above is the field before we activated that pressure pump, so we hope to see a much more consistently green field for safe play next year. This slide was also shown on Wednesday. This is the Little Qualicum River Erosion Protection, and so we'll be hoping to move forward with actually creating the solutions for that. Fire Smart Activities and Public Engagement. You know, kudos to our amazing fire department for not only keeping us safe, but for educating us. They're proactive, they show up at every community event, and so again, kudos to our department and what they do, that important work. And what's really exciting is that these successes are being recognized. So Director Hare and I, this will be the second year we actually go to the successful CAO course put on by Capilano University in conjunction with the Local Government Management Association to talk about our strategic planning session. And our consultant from last year actually said that she's talking about this with larger communities on the mainland. We're actually being noticed, not just in towns our size, but in significantly larger organizations because of the quality of the strategic planning that goes on. We have won the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award, so starting in 2023, that work built into us actually securing the award for 2024 and 2025. And it's not the award that's so exciting, it's what it actually symbolizes. So the criteria to receive this award is all about it being a great policy document, effective tool for decision-making, a public engagement tool, clear information. The benchmarks are huge, and again, kudos to the Finance Department for pulling this off without additional resources. I think this year is the year that we actually see a tipping, that it'll get a little easier for staff. We now have our templates in place, but really important that the public understands where their tax dollars go. And before 2023, that really wasn't evident without this kind of tool. So a huge, huge kudos to the Finance Department as well. Yes?
Have Mr. Hare and Ms. Khan take a bow. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. We also see a lot of that innovation piece again. So we've seen the 2024 Spirit of Innovation Award for how we're using our GIS and digital transformation. This was really about mapping, which is so important to our organization. We saw the Public Inquiry System and Automation, and the way we use AI to streamline those public inquiries also win a 2024 Spirit of Innovation Award. This award in 2025 was again MISA, but this was about the use of AI to enable extraction of data from legacy systems and website search. So the legacy system piece is really, how do we take all of that old information, all of that old mapping, and convert it into new technology? And so the way that they have done that and used AI to do that is also attracting attention right across the country. And then, of course, Council Harrison mentioned this at the last meeting, our Best of the Best Water Award for 2025. So again, kudos to our staff in the field for their important work. And then along comes two, right while we're really busy, clearly, along come two really significant potential opportunities that council wishes to consider. So we looked at due diligence for potential long-term lease of the Qualicum Commons and consideration for purchase of the Eagle Crest Golf Course. That was nowhere in our work plan for 2025, back to that visual of the bucket that was overflowing. So to get us to where we are today, I'm super proud of both council, the public, and staff, because we all had to go along on this journey. So when we think about the potential for the purchase of Eagle Crest Golf Course lands and the Qualicum Commons, what do these initiatives mean for 2026? So if we proceed with Eagle Crest, it is all hands on deck for the Planning and Community Development Department Administration, of course, that includes Corporate Services, Finance, as well as operations that have been impacted by the Qualicum Commons. Again, not in our work plan. So the Eagle Crest Golf Course lands will be looking at the operations transition, subdivision, servicing plans, development planning, disposition of development lands, park and natural areas, which would be the former Back Nine, park planning and naturalization. It hardly hurts if you say it quickly, that is a lot of work for 2026 and 2027. And again, the Qualicum Commons, that due diligence to consider extending the lease to a longer term, a lot of work still to be done. And so we adjust course. This should have been a much larger, less agile boat, but we did it. So what does that pivoting look like? So in July, we came to council and we said, okay, we see this, we have to prepare for this in advance. This isn't something that you can respond to in a matter of weeks. This is long-term planning that's affected. So we came to council in July, and we asked you to shift a number of 25 initiatives to 26, 26 to 27, and down the line we go. And this shift we asked for until the strategic initiatives reserve is replenished, because a lot of that, if used, will be taken up with the Eagle Crest Golf Course, and we anticipate replenishing those reserves if council advances, as well as staff capacity, because even if the money becomes available, the reserves are replenished. I still only have so many staff with so many work hours, so the capacity is a really key piece of this as well. So I'm just going to, your worship, go through the shifts that council made with your permission. So in 2025 to 2026, we saw the Tree Protection Bylaw Update moved to 2026. It's in red because I have another request of council on that one later today. We saw 2026 initiatives move to 2027. And again, that was by council resolution, so the Fire Department Strategic Plan, the Accessory Dwelling Unit Design Template, the Food Action Plan, the Visual Identity Refresh, the OECM Management Plans, the Parking Management Strategy, and the Community Park Needs Assessment were moved out a year. For 2027, of course, this creates a domino effect. We then have to keep moving out years. So from '27 to '28, we've got the Prohibit Smoking in Parks, the Visual Identity Refresh, the Parks Plan, the Encroachment Policy Review, the Ravens Born Affordable Housing, Encourage Residents to Fossil-Free Power Equipment, Implementation of the Climate Mitigation Actions Matrix, the Seniors Activity Centre Expansion. From '28 to '29, and these are two slides, we have Controlling Outdoor Cats, Dementia-Friendly Community, Form and Character Guidelines to Adapt Climate Adaptation and Mitigation, Updating the Noxious Weeds and Unsightly Premises Bylaw, Regulating Light Trespass, the Visual Identity Refresh, Updating Youth and Family Retention and Attraction Strategy, Improving Accessibility to the Foreshore, Retired Engine 2 Uptown Mobility Study, Commercial Centre Delivery Hours, Park Inventory Prioritization Plan, Ravens Born Affordable Housing Phases, Robust Accessibility Plan, and Developing an Accessibility Action Plan. So we pushed those out by council resolution. And the last shift in that was '29 to '30, which was the Urban Forest Master Plan. And I recognize, and council recognizes, that the community is very passionate about a number of these projects, if not all of them. So again, it's not saying these aren't important projects, it's just recognizing that we have only so much money and so much staff time. And so as we get more data-driven, and I can demonstrate that more to council, the more you understand the pinch points, and the more our public can understand the pinch points. So again, really important projects, still on the radar. We just have a few other things to focus on in 2026. Council also recognizing those pinch points, deferred new 2026 initiatives. So we listen to what council talks about all year long, and we compile what we fondly call the Blue Sky List, and we come to you to say, which of these lists, which of these items on this list do you want advanced? And so recognizing the list again was too long for 2026. In July, council made a resolution to move some things along. So these new items will also be considered in 2027 strategic planning, so I've started the Blue Sky List for next year, next year's strategic planning already. So council moved off the support for Orchid Place residents re-entering the workforce, heritage designation for the Old Baptist Church, the Committee and Commission Review, which is subsequent phases, aligning the development policies for funding opportunities, the Right Tree, Right Place was moved to 2027, the Pride Flag Raising Event, and your worship, this was a request for a standalone event, but I think council did an initial event the first time the pride flag went up, and then that flag has gone up every year since. So, but again, it was on the list. There were two that were on the list that were in the resolution that I didn't want to just make go away, because they are a council resolution, so I'm showing them in red. The Implementation of the Climate Mitigation Actions Matrix, that was already identified in 2027, even though it was addressed in this resolution. The other one was the Encouraging Residents to Transition from the Use of Fossil Fuel Outdoor Equipment, that was already in 2027. And the Environment and Sustainability Committee Recommendations to Council, I just want to flag that those have not yet been provided, but still on our list, so we don't lose them. And this is the last one, Road Standards Development Procedures, Airport Noise Abatement Committee Working Group was also on the list, so that goes to 2027 strategic planning. And Recycling and Waste Separation at Town Hall, this one's an interesting one, I'll talk to you about this in a little bit. It was actually a duplication that council said, okay, move this to 2027, but then it snuck back into 2026 under a different title. So I will, I'll flag that for you now, and we can talk about that a little bit more. And this one, council said, okay, well, we have to move those things off, but we still want to take a look at these things for 2026 strategic planning. So we have a number of those for council's consideration today. The Tosh Fee-for-Service Request, the Tosh Mid-Year Funding Request, the St. Stephen's United Church Request, which is for use of their parking lot, which has a spelling mistake, we'll correct that for the next presentation. The Three Stream Recycling Municipal Properties, again, two different titles, and the Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Region MABS Fee-for-Service Request. We also have three reoccurring initiatives that council has had since 2025. We also have three reoccurring initiatives that council has had since 2023, I believe, and these are pots of money, small pots of money, if you will, for council's discretionary decision-making throughout the year. So Tourism and Small Business Promotion, that's really for organizations that are bringing life to our downtown, and council actually saw, adopted a policy this year on that. So this is the first year those funds were allocated out, so we'll be reporting back to you on that. Collaboration with Qualicum First Nation, again, really important for council to have that pot of money for those discretionary opportunities that could come up, so we can collaborate with our neighbors. And Community Volunteerism, I'll be talking to you about that one, there has been no spends on that one, so we may suggest deleting that. So the question for today, your worship, is what can reasonably be accomplished with the finite resources and staff capacity that we have? And with that, your worship, I'll ask if we could have a short recess, because that's a whole lot of talking, much more quickly than I anticipated, and then maybe we could come back and move into the next part of the meeting.
Thank you. A motion for a quick recess. Counselor Skipsy, Counselor Vandevog will have 10 minutes of the meeting back to order. Pardon? Okay. So Ms. Vella, please proceed.
Thank you, your worship. So we'll move back into slide mode on the screen, please. Thank you so much. So again, the question for today is what can reasonably be accomplished operationally in 2026, given what is already on our plate? And I think allowing us to go through this with those overviews really is beneficial for the public as well, to understand, you know, what are those competing priorities that council has to balance out through this process? So the good news, in some ways, is that you do have some room in your strategic initiatives reserves fund projection. So based on the recommendations before council, you will see your strategic initiatives reserves with a closing balance of $3,000 at the end of 2025. So 2026, with what is proposed before you, would see a closing balance of $139,000. What I do caution you is that if 2026 is anything like 2025, you will need that $139,000 as a bit of free board for decisions that you will face during the upcoming year. And then we start to see things balance out in 2027, 2028, 2029 dips down again, and 2030 it comes back up. This is also precedent on the idea of council reinstating the full $250,000 of contribution towards this reserve. If council chooses not to do that and to remain at the current $125,000 contribution that you made for 2025, we are going to have to adjust some of these initiatives again as well in the outer years, because you simply won't have enough budget. So some hard decisions for you today. And these are your decisions. These are you in the hot seat, fully council's decision-making, and kudos to you for the governance that you have provided over the last three years. So we're going to go through these, looking at the new initiatives first. And, your worship, if you would like, we could ask council for the recommendation as we move through each item. A couple of these we may defer, but this one, I think, we could proceed with. I'll leave that up to you.
I think we can deal with them as they come up. So council, there's the staff recommendation. Any questions, comments? Would someone make the motion? Counselor Skipsy? Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, just before I make the motion, this is something that I put forward. I think that it's important that we lead by example, but I understand the constraints that we're within, so I would move the recommendation then to consider for the 2027 strategic planning.
Thank you. And I was seconded by Counselor Vandevog. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed, if any, carried unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. And I should note that if there is a discrepancy between the scoping sheet in everyone's package and the resolution on the slide, it is the resolution on the slide that stands. We were refining as late as last night, so thank you, your worship. The next recommendation is regarding the Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Society Funding Request, and the recommendation is before you on the screen, your worship. And for the public, it is, the scoping sheet is on page nine of your agenda package.
Thank you. Any comments? Counselor Skipsy?
Okay. Well, I'm happy to see this come forward. I think that, excuse me, what the Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Society provides is much needed, and I think that the town just doesn't have the resources or capacity to do some of these things, but they're important things. And we, I often see all of council, most of council, if not all of council, at the events that they take, especially around reconciliation. And so my only thing, only question would be that how does it work to cover the insurance like we do with other organizations that are in town-owned buildings? And I think that it needs to be fair across the board, so.
Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. Mayor Westbrook, through you to Counselor Skipsy. So how it works now is the insurance that the town pays to MIBC to insure the buildings is put on to a lot of tenants as what their rent. So for example, Valhalla, they don't pay any rent to the town, but they do reimburse the town for the costs that the town incurs for the insurance through MIBC. So with, currently with MABRI, they pay us actual rent of $2,000 a month, so $24,000 a year. So if council proceeds with this resolution, our suggestion is that we look at their lease agreement and we afford them the $24,000, but they would still pay us, we would still keep the lease agreement, they would still pay us their $2,000 a month. This would just offset that. And so the insurance, we would need to look into that component, because this isn't, this is a different agreement, essentially. This is a lease agreement, not, not like what we do with someone like Valhalla or the churches, for example, it's the same thing, they're reimbursing us just for the insurance. So this would need to be looked at.
Right, but I think what Counselor Skipsy's saying, they should also be paying the insurance. Okay. So there's a recommendation. Is there, have you moved it?
I would move it.
You moved it, and Counselor Harrison seconded. Further discussion? Counselor Harrison?
Just for the public's benefit, we did have a presentation from them on this, and some of the things they want to do are initiatives that council was already relaying to staff to do. So this basically takes work away from staff that we otherwise wanted to do. So the fee-for-service isn't just for doing new events, it's for doing initiatives that we would be advancing, probably at a higher cost, at the end of the day, to the taxpayer than what MABRI is going to involve with this. So I think it's just, it's prudent fiscally, but it's also good for the community, so it's a good initiative.
Counselor Young?
I'm in agreement with Counselor Harrison on all that he said, and I've just counted some of the initiatives that they have done for 2025, and I've got over 38 events that they have done. And I've spoken to Ray, the manager, and he has said that they'd be more than willing to look for grants in helping with restoration of the heritage building, and they are presently looking at a grant for replacing the front patio. So, and they're also willing to work with anyone on council as to what initiatives that we'd like for them to maybe look into or spearhead, because they're all about stewardship of our environment and our community.
Thank you. Counselor Vandevog?
Thank you. I agree that this, they do provide a good service already in the town, and that this fee-for-service, they are giving us a service for this money, for these monies, and I think that's really important to emphasize, is that they are taking on, as Counselor Harrison said, they are taking on a lot of the work that the town would be doing on our own. And so I think it's really is a valuable service that they are providing to the town.
I think we're all in agreement. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, if any, carried. Thank you. Please.
Thank you, your worship. So we have a one-time funding request from Tosh, and this is on page 19 of your agenda. There's actually also a fee-for-service request, so Tosh has two requests in for council consideration. Staff are recommending advancement of the one-time funding request. Staff has recommended up to $50,000 in your scoping sheet. What we would have to do is work out the details of what the agreement for that looks like, and I wanted to clarify that since this slide was developed and the agenda was produced, we have had additional input from Tosh, your worship. So they wanted us to clarify that the fee-for-service proposal and mid-year request is for operational stabilization funding, not programming expansion. The primary goal of this support is to sustain core services, including education, exhibitions, and community events, by ensuring reliable staffing, visitor services, and administrative continuity. References to additional evening or alternate time classes were included only as examples of potential outcomes made possible through increased staff capacity, not as deliverables or evaluation metrics. If council approves funding for 2026, we would be happy to work collaboratively with staff to establish appropriate deliverables and reporting metrics that reflect the operational nature of this support. These may include: maintenance of current service levels, five-day operations, public access, and volunteer coordination; sustained delivery of exhibitions, education programs, and visitor services without interruption; stabilized staffing levels to prevent closures or service disruptions; continued contribution to the town's economic development and cultural tourism goals through year-round community programming. For context, our fee-for-service submission outlines several areas of value delivery to the municipality: cultural tourism and economic development, visitor center services, youth and seniors programming, culture and community hub operations, community and culture partner engagement, arts promotion. And these are the ongoing operational functions that serve residents and visitors while advancing the town's goals for culture, tourism, and community vitality. So they are proposing an amendment to the evaluation metric, which would be to replace the increased number of art classes offered with demonstrated operational stability and improved organizational capacities to sustain and expand Tosh's community, tourism, and arts programming year-round. And the rationale for this is that it is for operational support, not a project grant. And while they continue, they may continue to expand programming, this investment is intended to strengthen staffing, ensure stable operations, and build long-term capacity for consistent community and cultural service delivery. So if council chooses to advance this today, staff will go away and work on what that agreement and the deliverables and the metrics would look like. The item before, but council today is to decide, do you want to allocate that budget? Again, staff are supportive of a one-time funding request to assess how that one year goes, and then allow next council to consider a longer relationship, which a fee-for-service typically is. So over to you, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vella. Counselor Young?
As your liaison, I've been attending their board meetings on a regular basis, and I see how hard this board, this new board, works on making this gallery a success and resilient from what's happened in COVID and, and the obstacles that other art galleries are suffering from without financial support from grants. There is a lack of that. And having a gallery in any community is a core value amenity for all of us to have, and it contributes to the well-being and health of a community to have an art gallery. So I totally support their ask, and they did ask for more than 50, and they did ask, I think, 75, but being that we have 50, that is possible, I would support asking, allowing the 50,000, but also to say if we could have a report from them at Q3, that possibly, if we can at that time, and if they still need the additional 25,000, that we would consider supporting that as well.
Ms. Vella?
Thank you, your worship. So entering into this type of agreement with Tosh will fundamentally change the relationship in that council will be requesting financial documentation and things like that. So just like we have other groups who receive money and report out on their budget and their status and their accomplishments annually, we would actually include Tosh into that standing process, and these details would be worked out in this proposed agreement.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison?
Yeah. I do, the number I had in my head was 50,000 as well, coming into the meeting. But I, just to point out, with a fee-for-service negotiation, it would be in everyone's interest to have a report maybe one quarter before the termination of that. So we're not getting a report the same week, we have to make a decision in a future council. That would not be ideal. So I do know the mayor also spoke to me, though, in that brief recess, that there's a lot of new information that's been coming in, and my takeaway, and just for the public's benefit, too, some of this information has been received this week, while we have a few other things going on this week, as you may have read from the news. So it's understandable that there's a few fine points to clarify, and the mayor sort of mentioned that we might want to clarify that in the future, but I don't want to make a motion to defer, because then we can't talk about this anymore, we can only talk about the deferral. But there were some things where, like broadly, broad idea, I think there's a merit here for one year and see what happens. Dollar amount maybe is not the full amount they were requesting, but I do think there's some things where, I think there's a little bit of confusion sometimes about what's operational and what's more capital expenditures, and what's the town contributing, and then having all that information teased out might be helpful, too, for the public, to know how much we are contributing to Tosh, but also there are some differences for how other groups are funded. And it's one of the things, when I was looking at the documents, both sides are true, actually. It's just we have to present all that information cohesively, so the public's aware of that. But anyways, I'll let other folks weigh in first before we go any further.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. And I do support the, oh, Ms. Vella, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just relating to Counselor Harrison's query, so if the public does go to page, that's the wrong slide on the screen, but we have the one-time funding request on page 19 of the agenda. And so on that scoping sheet in the agenda, the town does currently support Tosh through in-kind assistance, including the lease of the old schoolhouse building at a nominal rent of $1, plus reimbursement of insurance costs. And the 2025 rate for that was $254.83 per month. So that's payable by the town to the Municipal Insurance Association. We also provide financial assistance through grounds maintenance, capital maintenance, and responding to requests for repairs, which all represent a significant, ongoing municipal subsidy. So for example, 2025 saw the town invest $40,000 in the construction currently underway of new accessibility washrooms. So again, that kind of information for the public is detailed on the scoping sheet, and I'd like to thank the board for their collaboration as we work through this process, recognizing this isn't their full ask, but the exchange on this has been, has been really great. So kudos to the board again for their collaborative approach. And just one more thing, your worship, differentiating between the one-time funding request, which was originally for 29,000, plus a fee-for-service for approximately 75,000, staff are recommending not advancing the fee-for-service and just advancing a one-time funding request up to $50,000, so more than the original one-time ask.
Thank you. Thank you for that background information, that's helpful. Counselor Vandevog?
Well, I have a bit of a tougher time with this, because most of our monies are going to organizations such as MABR, where they are providing a service. So I understand this is not a fee-for-service agreement, but it's just, we have a lot of organizations that would appreciate funding just to help them out, and I don't know how we're going to decide which ones are more needy than others, and to give a one-time donation so that they can get so that they can get back on their feet. I don't know that I agree with that. I definitely don't agree with $50,000 if we were going to make a one-time contribution to Tosh. I think it should be for their ask of $29,000, which they had initially. And then see if they have any more ideas about how they could actually provide a service to the town that the town can then pay a fee for, or pay them a fee for. So I'm actually not in agreement with this initiative and definitely wouldn't want to go higher than the requested $29,000 if it goes, if it does go ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Skipsi.
Thank you. Well, I'm struggling with this one a little bit as well. I think it's really important that, like, Tosh has been, had a sustainable business model, whatever that was, for the last 35-plus years. And I think it's really important that a sustainable business model takes them into the future. So whatever that needs to look like. I'm also concerned a little bit about the direction. With losing the gift shop, I saw that as sort of a portal into the operations and attracting people in for people who, well, the artisans, I think, benefited. Our local artisans benefited greatly from being able to sell and have their artwork featured in the gift shop. So, but with not having previous financial statements, I don't know how profitable or unprofitable it was for them. So, but I would, I would support some kind of one-time, but not an ongoing fee-for-service at this time. Thank you.
So what would you suggest as a one-time contribution? You can think about that, and I'll give the floor to Counselor Harrison.
Well, I would point out, too, the gift shop was closed because of a council resolution. It was council who basically said, thou shalt not do these certain things within the building. And that's in the lease, and the lease is a public document. So just to clarify, it wasn't them actually closing the gift shop. It was sort of forcing that to be closed. Now, there's a fair argument whether it was making money or not. There's a fair argument with that. I think for me, one of the things, why I support a little bit more money for Tosh is that they sort of list all the things they're doing, and they're not saying they're at their events. Whereas Mabry lists all the events they're doing and saying, we're doing this for the town. We say, well, Mabry does 30 events. This is great. Tosh also does probably a huge number of events, but they didn't quite detail it as much. And then when I look at the subsequent economic impact, and I'm not trying to knock the museum when I say this. I'm not saying they don't deserve the funds they get, but they do get over $120,000 a year. And there are probably more folks who attend, show up at Tosh as tourists in the summertime than go to the museum. I know member Counselor Horner used to say the museum should be a cultural, economic driver for the town of Qualicum Beach. And they have a lot of great exhibits, but I don't think that's how things have panned out. I think there are a lot more visitors to Tosh. Even just yesterday, once getting groceries, there was someone taking a picture of the building outside. There's an older retired couple taking a picture of the building who look like they're probably not from town if they're taking a picture of the building. You never know, but probably not. So I do think the economic impact of Tosh is significantly larger than most other nonprofits we work with. Now, how you calculate that, fair question. I'm not clever enough to do that. But I do think that there's a lot of different factors to look at with this. And the mayor's initial suggestion to me, sort of in the recess, and I think to some other members of council, that we have further discussions on this, I think is prudent.
Yes, and this is only a recommendation to council. Counselor Young, and then Counselor Vandevog. But before that, I'll give the floor to Ms. Vella.
Thank you, your worship. I think it's just worth clarifying that the restriction council put on in relation to the gift shop was only that the retail of art supplies had to be linked to the bundling of art supplies specific to the classes provided. So that was the restriction. The extrapolation of the results of that, I'll leave with council. But again, that was the decision that you made, was to restrict the sale of art supplies specific to the classes that Tosh was holding. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Counselor Young, and then Counselor Vandevog.
In regards to the gift shop and what it used to do and what is not around to do at this point. They do have art and other things for sale in the building right now. And it's not fair to talk about the old Tosh versus the new Tosh because the new Tosh has so many more new ideas and other things that they have done that are success stories. And they've had a petition out there that had 1,600 residents that are in support of the town providing operational funding. They serve annually 15,000 people through their art gallery. And a lot of their benefits, it is not so that you can actually, that is tangible. They bring people into the community as an economic driver. It is definitely for our well-being in the community for many people that are not sports enthusiasts but enjoy arts for their well-being. It's just important to, I feel, to give this one-time ask and see what the results are, what the benefits are. Because I would hate to see the closure of this gallery that's been around for so many decades and has been providing our community so much service and benefits.
Thank you, Counselor Young. Counselor Vandevog.
Well, again, I don't disagree that Tosh is, does provide a valuable service in many ways. But many of our organizations provide many benefits in many ways. And a lot of them, probably most of them, are intangible benefits as well. I might suggest that we are under economic development study. And I was hoping that that would come sooner, the results of that would come sooner than then. I think that it's not going to happen until quarter one or quarter two in 2026. But that might give us some insight into what other economic drivers are in town and what effect they might have. And if, in fact, there is an economic driver that is more important, for lack of a better word, than others. So I don't know that we can get any of that information at this point. But we have had that study going on for at least, I'm tempted to say, six months, but it might not be, maybe more like three months. So again, I see the value of Tosh, and I think it is important to a lot of people. But for us to just give them money to help them, I don't know if I agree with that because there are other organizations that are as valuable and probably as needy as well.
And as your chair, I'd like a number. Counselor Skipsi.
Aha. Well, I have been contemplating this during the discussion. And I do think that the arts are kind of under fire. They're underfunded, and it's only going to get worse. So I would be okay with the $50,000 this time, one time.
So you make that as a motion?
I would make that as a motion.
Fill in the blank of $50,000, seconded by Counselor Harrison. Further discussion. Counselor Harrison.
Well, I would prefer to one-year fee for service for $50,000, but this is sort of potato-potato at the end of the days. $50,000 for operating versus $50,000 for operating with less staff.
Titled "The Old Schoolhouse," Tosh Fee-for-Service Request Be Referred to 2027 Strategic Planning for Consideration. So again, your worship, staff are recommending that it not be advanced for this year, but we commit to adding it to the list for 2027 for further consideration after you have a year to assess the outcomes of your decision.
Yeah, that makes sense. Counselor Harrison.
Just one question to staff. So if we are doing one-year funding that would expire in 2026, so shouldn't we be assessing it in 2026? I'm just thinking, because then if you do 2027, there's basically a year-long gap in the middle. So I'm just curious about what staff thinks about that.
My thought on that is that there's going to be an election, and they may have a whole different perspective on what we're deciding today. But they'll have the benefit of having years' experience to work with staff, the board, the whole community about the importance of the Old Schoolhouse. So they have that benefit, and they can go from there. So I agree with the staff recommendation.
And to your point, too, if the future council disagrees with our strategic plan, I think we all know what happens, so.
So if I could have a motion for this request, this recommendation? Nobody? Well, I guess we'll go to the next thing. What, I don't quite understand. We're saying that this will be referred to 2027 for the discussion we just had.
Well, then, I'll move that just for consideration, too. I was going to make an amendment. Amendment would fail, and then, yeah.
Thank you. Seconded by, no seconded, the motion fails. Please proceed.
Oh, I would second Counselor Harrison's amendment.
Okay, we do have a second there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Harrison.
I won't make the amendment, actually, because it's just sort of a bit of a waste of time, in my view. But I do support it being on the books somewhere.
Yeah, well, it is now. Okay, further discussion. All in favor? Opposed of any? Counselor Skipsi opposed. Counselor Vandevog opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So St. Stephen's United Church has a fee-for-service request related to the use of their parking lot. We did receive correspondence as late as 8 o'clock this morning. And so what I'd like to do is to bring this item back to the next strategic planning session, November 12, when I've been able to tease apart a few more pieces of the puzzle and consult with my operational staff to really understand what is the level of service that we currently provide for maintenance of the parking lot and related issues, your worship. So if we could work with the representatives for the church and bring this back on November 12, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you. I understand that's a reasonable request. So Counselor Skipsi, Counselor Harrison.
I was just going to discuss it for one sec.
I just got to move in a second. So Counselor Skipsi moves. Counselor Vandevog seconded. Discussion. Counselor Harrison.
Sorry, I was going to discuss the motion itself, so I'm not sure if we're discussing a deferral. Okay. Yeah, there's this, because I met some of the folks yesterday and did some other research. But I guess we'll discuss that at a future meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Vandevog.
I'm just wondering if in your research and discussions, if it could be looked at. I'm not clear if, if the St. Stephen's is receiving the tax exemption, would the parking lot, if they are renting it out essentially, would that be, is that part of their tax exemption? Or are the two separate? So I don't know that, you know, they offer, or they answer offhand. But I would be interested to know how that affects things in the future.
Ms. Vella or Mr. Herr?
So I, the director can correct me if I have that wrong. But I will say that if revenue is generated from a portion of those lands, then that portion of the land has to be exempted from the permissive tax exemption. Now I'm going to look right to see if I have the nod.
That would be up to council's discretion, even though they do receive revenue. So they receive a statutory exemption for the worship portion of the church, the land beneath it. And then the surrounding lands, including the parking lot, would be at the discretion of council, regardless of whether they operate or generate revenue from that portion of the property or not.
Thank you.
So, your worship, we will bring that item back on November 12, those details ironed out. So if any counselor has been approached individually and has information that would help us with this discussion, that would be really great if you could share it with staff prior to November 12.
Thank you. So we can take all those and that in one fell swoop for?
No, we're just doing a motion to defer.
Just a motion to defer to the 12th, your worship.
Thank you. And was there a motion already? We voted, okay? Yeah, I didn't think we voted on this.
Sorry, it's been moved and seconded. We need to vote.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Opposed of any? Carry. Thank you.
So, your worship, now we move into the reoccurring initiatives that council has in your budget. So since 2023, there has been council discretionary funds for collaboration with Qualicum First Nation, our very important neighbors. So this recommend-
Thank you. Counselor Skipsi, Counselor Vandevog. Discussion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So this is another council discretionary decision-making line item that has been in the budget since 2023. And the recommendation from staff is that the committee, the whole, recommends to council that council direct staff to advance the initiative titled Tourism and Small Business Promotion with a budget provision of $10,000 to the 2026 to 2030 financial plan and fiscal '26. I will note, your worship, that council developed a policy for how these funds will be distributed, and they were allocated to a number of groups this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion. Counselor Harrison.
Just moving the staff recommendation.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Skipsi. Discussion. Counselor Young.
I would like to say, I would like to take this event, this $10,000 proposal off and put it back into our reserves. I feel that when it comes to promotions, all the nonprofits, many, do not require taxpayers' funding support to put on events. And I feel that this $10,000 didn't need to be awarded to the Downtown Business Association because they also have the support of the Chamber of Commerce. And many businesses will fund events in the community without having to ask the taxpayers' support. And I feel like, for instance, Rotary, they don't ask for funding support. In fact, they're there to do things without using a taxpayer's money. The Garden Club, too, they don't ask for money from taxpayers to put on events. So I don't believe we need to have $10,000 available to nonprofits to have.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor, I'll just go down the list. Counselor Harrison, go ahead.
About that, just one thing if staff could clarify. I know, truthfully, we've annually given funds to the Brandt Wildlife Festival. With those sorts of events, when they come to us and ask for $5,000 or something, would that come from this fund or would that be a separate item in the budget?
That's a separate item.
Separate item? Okay, thanks.
Counselor Skipsi.
Well, I will be supporting this one because I think it's these kind of events that really help with the fabric of the community and build community. And so I appreciate the events and having these activities that bring people from all out, from Qualicum Beach and surrounding areas to support our businesses and community. So I think it's money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vandevog.
I, too, do support this. And if we look at the list of organizations that were awarded funding this year, there were, they weren't all businesses. CUES is Qualicum Community Education and Wellness Society. They were awarded funding. The Qualicum Beach Collective, they're not all businesses. They're more about building community. The Qualicum Beach Curling Club is definitely, well, I suppose you could call it a business, but I don't see it as a business per se. So I think that it does afford organizations that are more into building community rather than building their businesses do deserve to have some kind of funding. I did have a question about the, I guess, about the policy itself. And I don't know if now is the time to ask those questions, but there were a couple of things because it has been a work in progress. I would like to see some of the basic statements of the policy. I'd like to see clarification on them.
Okay, thank you. We can go and do this, and then we'll come back to another meeting, including a council meeting. And these are only committed hall recommendations to council. And if you would forward your questions about issues you have, that would be helpful. And if you would forward your questions about issues you have, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Young.
Just again, I want to reiterate how tight our financial budget is and that we're not trying to increase our taxpayers', and I know it's only $10,000, but many nonprofits can fundraise for whatever the event they want to host. I was, just last night, I was at a Cats on the Move fundraiser, and they did a beer and burger night, and they raised almost $3,000. So I think any nonprofit organization that's wishing to do something in the community, they can be resourceful enough to host that fundraiser and not ask for a handout from the town, from the taxpayer's pocket.
And we appreciate your insight. So Ms. Verella, was this moved and seconded already?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Counsel Harrison.
So just to do the last person who went in on this, I, I think, just because we have something in the budget, we don't have to spend it. So that's the other thing, too, to Counsel Young's point. We might be a little bit more disciplined in the next year, but I'm just thinking that, say, there was a group of volunteers who said, we're going to bring back Fire and Ice, and that was hugely popular back in the day, it was a huge amount of work to do, so I'm not suggesting anyone's going to do it. But if there's some group we don't foresee in the next calendar year who want to do something that is something we really support, then we just have a little bit of wiggle room in the budget where there's money set aside. There's also to a policy that, overarching policy, that guides how we spend that money, but I do think there's going to be a budget conversation subsequent to this, and I think there's going to be further refinement during budget on some of these things. So I'd rather say, let's start with a wider set of spends and then winnow it down, than winnow it down and find out later that we give Raj a headache in the middle of the year of, we've already collected our taxes, but we need more money, Raj, how do we do that? So I just, that's why I'm in favor for now, but I do take Counsel Young's point to heart, that I think she has a very good point. We have to be very disciplined this year.
They would have to present eligible expenses, invoices, they don't just get $10,000. They have to show us what they're spending it on, and whether that's eligible. Ms. Verella.
That's correct, your worship. So we saw a number of groups apply under council's policy this year for smaller amounts that total just less than the $10,000, but it's not one group receiving the $10,000, so that would totally be within council's purview next year as well. So again, they make application and then submit receipts for eligible expenses.
Thank you. I think we've had a good discussion. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed of any? Counsel Young opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you, your worship. So the next slide is about community volunteerism. So this is the third pot, if you will, for council's discretionary decision-making that you've seen since 2023. There was a small spend against this amount in 2023, but no spend in 2024 or 2025. So staff are recommending that the committee, the whole recommends to council that council not advance the initiative titled Community Volunteerism to the 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Can I have a move or a second there? Counsel Vandervog? You moved the motion, the recommendation, second? Oh, you're not? Okay. So Counsel Young, you like? Okay. You're, you're very, very flexible. So Counsel Young moved, then Counsel Harrison?
Then I'll second it for debate.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Well, I think I would apply Counsel Harrison's comments on the previous item, that it's better to start broad and then sort of chisel down if we need to. I would be open to maybe halving it, so there's $5,000 in the budget instead of $10,000, I would be okay with that. But I do think it's, it's, it's important to be able to have that money in case something comes up, like it was the Aerosmith Naturalists, who are a nonprofit organization, all volunteer-driven, hosted a community event that brought people from all over the province to Qualicum Beach to stay and enjoy and, and spend their money in our community, and we sponsored it to the tune of $2,000 and provided everybody with a beautiful Qualicum Beach bag to take home with them. And I think that was money very well invested, so I would not like to see this disappear completely in case future opportunities like this come forward.
There's no number attached to this, so we can discuss that later.
Yeah, and broadly, I agree with Counsel Skipsey, too. The other thing, I think, when we're discussing the number of people who apply for things, folks might not always know that there are pots of money available. That's the other thing, too, and I'm not sure how much we advertise that there were funds available for community groups.
We don't advertise, we don't have pots of money available.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm not saying that we want to tell everyone that there's lots of money when you ask the town for money, but just a broader point is when we're saying there's no uptake, how much were we advertising that there's this much money in our budget and eligible applicants are encouraged to apply? I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm just saying, I, I think that Counsel Skipsey's point is broadly where I agree, but since the recommendation is just whether we advance it or not, then I wouldn't agree with the staff recommendation at this time, but I do think we're going to have a, a very long discussion in budget about what we cannot do as much as what we can.
And we used to have a standard policy, no grants and aid. It was so simple. Like, we said no to everybody, but obviously times have changed and we need to be considerate, that's important. So there is a motion to be moved and seconded, further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, all opposed, so I'm sorry, the motion fails altogether. Thank you. So this is where we are.
So if staff could propose an alternate motion for council's consideration, and so it would be that the committee of the whole recommends to council that council direct staff to advance the initiative titled Community Volunteerism with a budget provision of X to the 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan in Fiscal 2026.
I would be happy to move that, and I'll make the amount 5,000 for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Harrison seconding that? All in favor? Opposed of any, carry. Thank you. Well, that was a really dare.
Thank you, your worship. So staff are also seeking some additional council direction today, again, as we start to tighten things up, looking at past resolutions, getting ready to move into budget, we just need some additional direction on a number of items. So the first one before you is the Airport Master Business Plan, and we would like to have a motion that saw this deferred from 2026 to 2027 in the financial plan, noting that this project is 100% grant-dependent. Thank you, your worship.
Discussion on that. Counsel Vandervog? You moved a motion, second Counsel Skipsey, discussion, Counsel Harrison.
Well, I personally have these very, very ambitious ideas for how we could electrify our airport and get electric planes in and all these other things. I just recognize by, given that the Eagle Crest land use change has passed, that's been adopted, I don't expect there to be any staff time for this, and I think that's really the gating factor here. If staff are recommending something that's 100% grant-dependent is pushed back a year, it means they have no time to do the actual work. So I do support this, even though I do recognize there's a lot of very interesting things we could do at the airport, but there's only so much staff time.
Thank you. Agreed. All in favor? Opposed of any, carry. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So the next item that we're seeking direction on is the Tree Protection Bylaw. So we did see council defer this from 2025 to 2026, back in July. However, as we've discussed today, the planning department, who would be lead on this, is at maximum staff capacity for 2026, given consideration of the requirements for advancing the development of the Eagle Crest Golf Course lands. In addition, our emergency programmer and climate action position is actually vacant at the moment, which, again, impacts this timeline. So we're asking that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the Tree Protection Bylaw Update Initiative with a budget of provision of $40,000 be deferred from Fiscal 2026 to 2027 in the 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan. Thank you, your worship.
Discussion. Counsel Harrison?
I was just going to move the staff recommendation first.
Thank you. Seconded, Counsel Skipsey? No, seconded, Counsel Vandervog? Thank you. Discussion. Counsel Skipsey.
Well, I guess I have a little bit of a concern, and one is, this is the first time I've seen this, so it's a bit, I didn't see it coming, so I would have prepared a bit more, maybe, to respond to this, but as far as I'm aware, council approved staff funding of one position in planning, one full-time position, to administer the tree bylaw. And so I'm a little concerned that, and I understand that maybe that staff person isn't being used for that purpose, but I think it would be fair for council to get more information on that and/or the public, because there's probably an expectation that there's staff resources applied to the tree bylaw. So, thank you.
Thank you. And this is coming back for another, because it's only a recommendation, but if you want to provide some insight, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. So I will remind council that you right-sized the planning department, and Counselor Skipsey is correct in that it was related to the tree protection bylaw. However, subsequent to that, Bill 44 was dropped in our lap, so if I hadn't been coming to you for the tree bylaw, I would have certainly been coming to you for planning support for Bill 44 and all the resulting requirements. What we've done with that support is manage the tree bylaw to date, as well as being able to respond to Bill 44, as well as being able to provide support to the engineering department. So that position is, again, the plate overflows, but the scope has changed from the original ask, so I think that's fair for staff to come back with a summary of how those dollars in staff hours are being allocated. But I will, I will tell you that it is managing that tree bylaw, responding to Bill 44 and all those announcements, providing support to changing council strategic initiatives, as well as supporting the engineering department. So we can put that in a memo to staff or to council.
I think you just did. Counsel Harrison.
And I would have loved to see this done in the next year, because there's a lot of edits I'd love to suggest. I have a lot of concerns about the impacts, particularly for older seniors who don't have a lot of money, and then the, the bond essentially have to provide to the town for two years. You have to take out more than one tree. But at the same time, if staff are telling us a good faith they don't have the staff capacity, they don't have the staff capacity. So, so be it, I'll take them at their word for that.
Thank you. So you just moved that? Okay, so you're in, okay, discussion? Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Counsel Skipsey opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Moving forward, we would like this formalized from councils. Whereas the town incurred an expenditure of $10,000 for a building assessment prior to council's decision to move forward with a one-year lease with school District 69 for the Qualicum Commons, that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the initiative titled Qualicum Commons be funded with a budget provision of $10,000 from the Strategic Initiatives Reserve in Fiscal 2025, and this is a retroactive formalization of this action, your worship.
So, so that would be very helpful. Counsel Skipsey, Counsel Harrison, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Verella.
Council wasn't coming in totally cold on that, so I wasn't expecting any changes. But again, we do like to make sure this is very transparent, even though we could have accommodated this in budget, so thank you for that, council. The next item is the Wayfinding Signage Phase 1, and so right now it's included in Fiscal 2025 with a budget of $3,100, and we gave an update on the Q3 reporting that this initiative will not progress in 2025. And so we'd like council to formally not refer this. So the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the initiative titled Wayfinding Signage Phase 1 not be rebudgeted in the 2026 to 202030 Financial Plan, and that this initiative's timing and scope be reconsidered during the 2020 strategic plant, 2027, pardon me, strategic planning process. This was actually a collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce that I think we need now to go back to the Chamber of Commerce and see where they are at with this initiative as they were the driver behind this, and I think things have changed. So staff are seeking this direction, and we'll go back, and we'll flag this for 2027.
Thank you. Discussion. Counsel Vandervog? More recommendation? Counsel Skipsey seconded, Counsel Harrison.
Sorry, if we could just, just because I remember in the previous term, as Ms. Verella noted, the Chamber of Commerce was very keen on this, they were, and that's when I was the liaison, and they really wanted to do this, and it sounds like there's been a shift in the winds a bit with the chamber, and maybe if the current liaison, who I believe is Counsel Vandervog, just want to talk, like, is there anything public that the chamber wants to talk about this, or is this sort of, forgive me, just because I remember how keen Kim Burden used to be back in the day.
If we have information we can share, we should. Go ahead.
I don't know that I have anything specific to this, just that the structure of the chamber has changed over the last few months in particular, and I don't think that this is on their radar at this time, so, yeah.
Thank you, worship, and I will ensure that I reach out to the Chamber of Commerce to discuss this initiative with them. Thank you.
So Counsel Harrison?
And obviously with that, if I may, I'm, I'm sure it's obvious to the public, but I just want to clarify, too, so the public's aware, if the chamber came back with, in the correspondence with Ms. Verella, that, no, 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 actually, we are considering it, sorry, surprise, sudden right turn, that would be at a future council, that the future committee of the whole, that be brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed of any, carry. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. So this is the last additional council direction requested today, and then I'm hoping we could take a few-minute break before we go to the opportunity for the public to provide comment. Thank you, your worship. So this is general direction about your strategic initiatives reserve, and I touched on this earlier, recognizing that council reduced the contribution to the reserve to $125,000 last year as a way to bring down the tax impact. So we had a lot to talk about that at budget time, this was one of your pressure release valves. What we'd like to seek council direction on this year is to see that amount reinstated. So the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommends to council that staff be directed to reinstate the contribution to the strategic initiatives reserve in the amount of $250,000 in Fiscal 2026 to 2030 in the 2026 to 2030 Financial Plan. And then the note below explains that this really provides direction to staff for drafting the budget preparation or presentation, and then through the budget process, council may again consider reducing this amount as one of the pressure release valves on taxation, and then we'd have to have the larger discussion about a corresponding reduction in initiatives. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. That's a very good clarification. Counsel, comments? Moved by Counsel Skipsey? Counsel seconded, Counsel Young, discussion? All in favor? Opposed of any, carry. Thank you.
Your worship, so could I request a 15-minute break, please?
Certainly. Counsel, cave at a recess, Counsel Skipsey, Counsel Vandervog, all in favor? We have a 15-minute recess. Welcome back, and this is your moment. This is where we ask anybody from the gallery for input. Who'd like to start with that? If there's no input, we're going straight into lunch, okay?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councilors. Nice to see you again on this rainy day. I noticed that the-
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. Janet Taggart, Qualicum Beach. I noticed that the multi-use cinema issue that was in the strategic plan was not put up on the screen for postponement this morning, so I had this tremendous hope that it was still slated for 2026, for us to have discussions with members of the town planning department to look at identifying properties that might be available for this build, and I'm wondering if I'm correct in that, or was there something missing? And I'm wondering if I'm correct in that, or was there something missing?
Ms. Verella?
Thank you, worship. So, I will refer to Director Hare on this as well, but that was moved by council resolution to 2027. So, if we missed that on the list, I'll just look to my director to have him confirm that, please.
Thank you, Director. Sorry. C.A. Overella. It was on the July 23 council resolution to move from 2026 to 27. I will double-check the PowerPoint if, in the event that we inadvertently forgot to list it on the PowerPoint. However, I have confirmed that it was definitely deferred by council resolution.
Sorry. Thank you for that. I have to say that I'm really pleased that it's only put off by a year. I do understand with the Eagle Crest property purchase and the Qualicum Commons question that you have a lot on your plate right now, very important, big decisions. We just do not want to get lost in the shuffle here. We've been working on this for such a long time and feel with what we are providing for the town citizens right now, we're just building, going from win to win. Almost each month, we've added another screening of our TIFF films in the afternoon with subtitles for those in our community that have hearing loss. This has been met with a wonderful response. Our family matinees are enjoyed by many family groups in the community, and we do offer complimentary tickets to those families who are struggling financially at this time. And just the feedback is very positive. Our membership is growing. We really see this as a wonderful amenity for the future of Qualicum Beach to promote health and well-being and social interaction, a very important consideration in this time of isolation. And I know we have fabulous parks and walks and golf courses and everything else, but I really appreciate it if you would look at that other aspect of a good social community interaction location for those in our community who cannot participate in those, in an active lifestyle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, sorry, anyone else in the gallery? Yes, sir, come on up.
Are you able to hear me? Is that good? All right, thank you. So, thank you, your worship. Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I want to congratulate you first on your processes for public engagement. The committee of the whole is, it's unusual, having worked with other municipalities, it's particularly effective, and it gives a voice to residents that not all municipalities allow, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm Peter Wallace. I'm a resident here for almost four years, and I don't know, do you need any more introduction? So, yeah, my apologies for not doing that. So, what I'd like to talk to you about is to request that you allocate some resource and funding, if necessary, in the strategic plan to establish policy frameworks for the primary housing groups. And I believe you have a copy of a sheet that I sent in to corporate admin a short while ago, and it addresses one of those primary housing groups, notably the aging seniors and people with disability, and it suggests a way to be better prepared and better organized to receive proposals in those priority housing group areas. Now, I mean, I can go through this. I don't know if this is an appropriate forum to actually go through the detail in that policy proposal, or how you would like to deal with it.
Just give us your highlights.
So, the highlights are that in, to take senior housing and care homes, the town has a spectacular history that dates back to about 2004, when the community of care, campus of care concept emerged, and where there were models for public-private engagement. So, at that point, when the gardens was envisioned, it was envisioned with collaboration between VHA at that point, Island Health now, the town itself, and the residents. And over the last 20 years, some things have changed, and private developers no longer actually need the engagement of the public agencies in order to put together something that will work financially. And that's good. I mean, that's, private industry has to take care of itself, but the town should be taking care of its residents, and we have a situation with recent care homes and recent care home proposals where about 40% of the residents are not from our town or not from our area, so it's definitely not aging in place, and about 45% of our residents can't afford those private facilities. So, what I'm suggesting in this scenario is that we have an engagement process prior to a proposal that addresses those things, that addresses how we make care homes accessible to people of lower income and low wealth, and how we do something to create a greater concentration around aging in place and aging in community.
Thank you. Counsel Harrison?
I was just going to point out that there was something that was in the, well, it was a very tiny item in the strategic plan, about best practices for multi-generational housing, which I feel we didn't quite deal with. It was sort of like a two-paragraph staff report, really. But I do think there's two different ways to look at it. One is, I think Peter's correct to point out, or sorry, Mr. Wallace is correct to point out, that we have issues with the private sector in care homes. The prices they're asking for are very, very expensive, and so you'll have single seniors cashing out their equity of their home, and then a lot of that equity goes to the last, next six, seven years of their life, and suddenly. So, that's a real problem. But also, too, if we have a lot of single seniors in a single-family home, how do we build a carriage home or something for, for, I mean, usually grandma? There's more single women than men. It's about 750 widows and about 150 widowers in our town, right, in the last census? And then, how do we get their, maybe their kids to move to town, and they move into the single-family home? And what does that look like? How do we make that work? There are some really interesting ideas in other communities, but that's another conversation for another day. But just something I might take offline with staff is, I know we have zero capacity next year, so I'm not suggesting any new initiatives, but that might be something like 2028 or something we look at, because I'm just trying to look at staff's capacity. It's really limited.
And we appreciate that. Mrs. Sales, any comment?
Thank you. So, housing policy is a big discussion, and there's lots of discussion that's occurred to date, lots of discussions still coming, you know, with WAM and other, other discussions such as Eagle Crest. So, for the purpose of today, I think the question is whether counsel would like to consider allocating resources at some point in the future, whether it's '26 or beyond, for the purpose of developing a more robust policy framework like Peter is proposing here. So, I'm just suggesting that as a way to focus the potential path forward.
Thank you. Ms. Sales? Ms. Verella?
Thank you, worship. So, staff would support referring this to 2027 strategic planning for council's consideration, while it also may relate to other housing processes that will unfold between now and then. So, I think if we can stay live to that, but actually moving it to 2027 formally, then we'll know it won't get lost.
Thank you, Ms. Verella. So, if anyone would like to make a motion to that effect? Counsel Skipsy, Counsel Harrison. Further discussion? Counsel Harrison?
Well, I was just thinking that the previous initiative titled multi-generational housing, that's really what this is getting at, is how do we take care of seniors or senior housing? But there are certain things that I think overlap, that this is probably going to be a $50,000 item at the end of the day, with some staff time, if we're doing it the right way, because it's going to require a lot of public outreach. But, yeah, hopefully it's something we can get going sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Counsel Harrison. Counsel Young?
Well, because healthcare is a provincial mandate, and there is land in our community down by Eagle Park, I still believe that we should still really try to get Island Health to do a build at Eagle Park, and the land is there.
Thank you. Counsel Vandervog?
I don't know that I agree that this should be just under multi-generational housing. I think it's more complicated or in-depth. This specifically, I believe, is looking at seniors' housing. So, the priority groups according to WAM, essentially, is, are, and the OCP, young people and families, workers, social, older seniors, and people with a disability. And what Mr. Wallace is talking about is aging in place in Qualicum Beach, so I don't know if the title multi-generational housing covers that. It's more specifically for senior, seniors' housing in a different way, shape, or form.
Yes, but just as we, we are, have an issue with that, we have a concern about that, we also have a need for people who work in town but cannot find a place to rent, or too expensive to rent, certainly not be able to buy. We have a, and we've expressed this publicly, about firefighters. So, I think we can't just focus on one group and forget about the rest. So, this will be a very, very in-depth conversation to try and find places for people to live that they can afford. Mr. Sales?
Thank you. So, Ms. Verella had a good suggestion, that this could be referred to the 2027 strategic planning process, which occurs in 2026, just for, for the benefit of the delegate. So, at that point, we would have the outcome from the OCP review, we would also have the outcome from the ways to achieve attainable market housing projects. So, then it would be a more informed discussion of how to fill in the gaps between those existing policy frameworks.
Okay. Would you post a motion on the, on the screen, Ms. Simpson?
I don't have, I can't get it on the screen with what we're doing, but I could just, I needed clarity, so that the committee of the whole recommends to counsel that the housing policy options for priority housing groups be advanced to the 2027 strategic planning process?
Thank you.
Is that clear?
Counsel Harrison, Counsel Skipsy. Further discussion? Counsel Harrison?
Just a couple of points about VHA. One, the idea of VHA doing long-term seniors' care in Qualicum Beach is probably not going to happen, since they're advancing a very large facility in Lansville. So, that capital expenditure, VHA's under a lot of pressure right now financially. So, new capital expenditures, when they're building something, it's, there were three sites, I think, across Vancouver Island they were building. I think there was one in Campbell River, one in Lansville, I think there was one south of the Malahata. I could be wrong about the third location. But, so, I think for VHA, they're going to say, well, that's mission accomplished, those are all the builds we're doing. So, I don't expect them to do that specifically in Qualicum Beach. And the other thing, the mayor mentioned, workers. I have some, well, it's a bit complicated, not quite family members anymore, but I know some people who actually did the job of providing some in-home care through VHA, and there's going to be a huge surge in demand, and particularly when you are living on your own and you need a lot of support. That's going to be something where we're going to have to have some ongoing conversations with VHA about their staffing capacity, and then what those staff get paid, because the folks who provide that in-home care are not at the high end of the pay scale. So, where do they live? If we want them to take care of folks in our community, whether you're living at home alone or in some other scenario. So, yeah, just from the VHA side, I would expect that we should probably talk about the staffing capacity, as the mayor mentioned, because the staffing loops into this very much, but also, too, I should, I don't think we should expect them to build something to help us with this in the near future, sadly.
Is that any further discussion? Ms. Wallace?
Can I make a comment about that? So, I have a dialogue with Emily Higginson about the inclusion of Island Health into some of these discussions and processes. We haven't quite finished that discussion, but I believe it's a mistake to treat it as either Island Health build, or the town and private people, private developers build. I think the better approach is to say there needs to be some level of collaboration around these development projects to understand what the various agencies are prepared to contribute, and that will create the best outcome.
Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed of any? Well, Mr. Wallace, you succeeded in bringing the presentation and getting a motion as a result right away.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the work you're doing.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the gallery would like to speak? Yes, come on up, Tim.
Tim Bridger, Qualicum Beach. What Mr. Wallace raises very, I thought was very interesting. If I understood correctly, I think he said he provided information to town and staff on what he was telling. Could whatever he provided be made public so that other people can see? We heard what he said, but it would be, some of the detail would be interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, if it was presented at a public meeting, we can make it public to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the gallery? Then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn and have lunch, and that's it for today. Oh, Ms. Verella?
Your worship, just if we can put the closing slide up, which is 144, which does remind people that hopefully we'll see you again on November 12 at 10:00 a.m., and thank you for attending today and for your ongoing participation in these public processes.
And thank you, and the people you work with and the staff, everybody who's worked in full bore to try and get this presentation with all the slides of the things that we've done, because we forget. People ask sometimes, well, what does counsel do this term so far? Well, you need to be reminded about how your tax laws are at work and the things that we've done. So, if I could have one moment of silence, please, and then we'll conclude the meeting. Thank you. So, motion to adjourn. Counsel Vandervog seconded. Discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.